We will come to order, please stand for our invocation. Let us pray together. Our gracious Father, we thank you for this time that we can come and to study the time here and what we can do better for our community. Help our conversation, help our minds that we may lead us in the right direction, and help us in our conversation as we work together as a community to have a better quality of life. Help those in our community and the families who have lost loved ones this week, and Lord, we ask a special blessing on this meeting tonight. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Remain standing as we pledge allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Gentlemen, you've seen the agenda for the night. You also have at your place, as I think, a request for an additions to the agenda for business items seven, eight, and nine. Are there any other additions or deletions that need to be made to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion, we add these items and go forward?
Motion, second.
Motion is second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Madam Clerk will add seven, eight, and nine to the business items and proceed. Our first item of presentation tonight is we want to recognize the Municipal Clerks' Week. This is a time when this office, which has been honored for probably one of the oldest offices in our town government, and I'd like to do that now through a proclamation to our clerk, Ms. Shannon Williams. So Shannon, if you'll come forward. This proclamation recognizes the Clerks' Week, wherein it reads as such: "The office of the municipal clerk, a time honored and a vital part of the local government, exists throughout the world, and the office of municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And the office upon municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and the agencies of government at their levels. And municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all people. And the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And the municipal clerk continually strives to improve the administration, the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in educational programs, seminars, workshops, and annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. It is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of this office of municipal clerk. Therefore, Daniel Evans, Jr., the mayor of the town of Smithfield, I recognize that May 5th through the 11th of 2013 as Municipal Clerks' Week, and further extend appreciation to our municipal clerk, Shannon L. Williams, and to all municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their extraordinary dedication to the communities they represent." Shannon?
Shannon's done a good job as she's come on as clerk, and we do appreciate her and
the clerk's work that she does in our community. We'll move now to our public hearings. Somebody's playing with my chair. I thought that was a prank. Why would you do that?
Mr. Ashland.
We'll see how it works. We'll just be low tonight. I'll fix it. I can talk from a low venue. Okay, we have no public hearings tonight. We'll open it now for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard tonight in public comment? If you will come around, state your name and address for the clerk so she can record it while I work on my chair.
Hi, my name is Abrella, A-B-R-I-L-L-A, Robinson, R-O-B-I-N-S-O-N. I live at 309 North Fourth Street here in Smithville, North Carolina. I've only been a resident of Smithfield for the last two and a half years, it'll be three and a half. I moved here from Atlanta, Georgia. You may remember my mother, her name was Betty Robinson, she used to be part of the Smithfield Beautification Committee. And actually, I'm here today because I moved into her home, and there's kind of a lot of things that have been going on on North Fourth Street, but there's been some really good things going on on North Fourth Street, so that's what I'm here today to talk about. First of all, I want to thank Brett, Breck, our new compliance officer, because he's been instrumental in helping us kind of get people to clean up their lots and their property around North Fourth Street. There are a lot of vacant and empty homes where people are not keeping up their property, and as the new compliance officer, he's been doing a great job at that, and so I wanted to give kudos to that. Plus, we also have the issue of crime in our neighborhood, but I wanted to give a pat on the back to the police department too, because they've also been instrumental in helping us in our community, especially Officer Felentaz, who has been instrumental in helping us kind of keep an eye on things, and when there are issues or problems, we have direct line and communication. We also now have a neighborhood program, Neighborhood Association, that was started in the year that I've been here now, and we also have a Neighborhood Watch. So I just kind of wanted to come out and kind of let you folks know what a good job those departments and people have been doing in the community, and that I appreciate it and that the neighbors around us appreciate it, and we'd like to just say thank you.
What did you say your address was?
309 North Fourth Street.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. It's always good to hear the good things as well as those that need opportunity to improve. Any other comments for tonight's meeting?
I'd like to mention passing of two outstanding citizens of Smithfield. Last Monday, I believe it was, can't remember exactly, a long time pillar of this community passed away. He was 87 years old. He came to this community in the late 50s, early 60s, and he was a fine gentleman. Anybody that knew him could tell you that. He was a war hero of the First Corps. He was a Korean War ace, which means that he single-handedly shot down five MiG jets. And if you saw his array of medals, you would know that he was a true American war hero, and he needs to be saluted. I'd like to recognize his passing, that he was a solid citizen. And then yesterday, we lost another one, Mr. Pete Williams, who was a person in his family for a number of years, and he also was another pillar of this community. If there was anything good happening, Pete was behind it, and he certainly helped this town many times. You could go to him and tell him what you needed for the town, and it would happen. I'd like to recognize both of those gentlemen in the recording.
Thank you, Mr. Augman. It's true on both camps that we truly missed, and we'll keep their family in our prayers. We also have in the same comment line, seems tragedy strikes in threes, but we had our, one of our cashiers, her son was taken away from us in a car accident, I believe it was yesterday, Sunday, Sunday, excuse me. And we want to remember that family. I think arrangements will be made for tomorrow, so keep them in your prayers. Vicki Holling is our cashier, her son. Okay, any other public comment? Hearing none, we'll go through our consent agenda. Do I have a motion, do we approve the consent agenda?
Motion, second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Go through our business items. Special events, the first one is the American Cancer Society is requesting approval to conduct a Relay for Life event at the Triple S High School, May 30th through June 1st. Apple is requesting a sworn officer assisting, it's not budgeted. Approval as an annual event is also being requested. Ms. Trenbrough?
Thank you. The American Cancer Society is sponsoring the Relay for Life event. Event until last year had been held at Johnston Community College, and the event was moved from JCC to Triple S High School in order to provide a safer, controlled environment for the participants. The sponsor requests that the event be approved as an annual event and that be held either the last weekend of May or the first week of June each year. The Relay for Life event will be held at Triple S starting at 4:00 PM on May the 30th, 2013, and will proceed through the night and conclude at 6:00 PM, June the 1st, 2013. The event is a nonprofit event which will have more than 100 participants. The event will have a PA system, will also have amplified music. Food and goods will be sold during the course of the event. Permitting of the food vendors will be by the Johnston County Department of Environmental Health. The principal at Triple S High School, Michael Taylor, has given permission for the event, and we also have been made aware, the Parks and Rec Department, so that they can schedule their events at the park to accommodate the event, and also adjacent doctor's office and church across the street that have made their property available, and the Relay for Life folks will make that information available to us, and they will also have insurance coverage. The town council has asked to approve the Relay for Life event as an annual event. After approval, the town staff will coordinate the approval of the event for the event in future years. Council will be made aware of future Relay for Life events by report at the time staff receives the information. We're here representing the Relay for Life with a request for the annual event for staff. Also, a member of Relay for Life is here, Ms. Ashley Couch, and she would like to address the council also as part of this presentation.
Any questions for Mr. Emblert? If not, the applicant would like to come forward? You'll just state your name and address to the clerk, I would appreciate that.
Sure, I'm Ashley Couch, spelled C-O-U-C-H, in 69 Cabin Grove Court in Andrew, North We are looking to make this an annual event. The Relay for Life of Johnston County has been going on for about 16 years now. It started out at one of the high schools and moved to Johnston Community College, where it was held over the past several years. Last year, we did move to Triple S High School. We outgrew JCC. It's a very large event. We have over 1,700 participants in the event, and so we are looking for the approval for it to be an annual event each year, because it will continue to be an annual event until a cure for cancer is found. We are also requesting to have an officer present at the event for the entire length of the event. We do handle some very large sums of money at this event. It is the second fundraising, largest fundraising event in North Carolina, so we would like to have an officer present for the full 24 hours of the event as well.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Couch?
Yes, sir.
When you had that event at the college?
Yes, sir.
Did Smithfield PD assist with that, or was it Sheriff Department?
Do you guys?
Providing that protection?
It was Smithfield PD.
Was it all Smithfield? Okay.
And that is what we're requesting again, is Smithfield Police Department assistance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, you've heard the request. What is, what's the wishes that can? We approve the request.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? It's incorporated with the option, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, the second item will be a subdivision request, S-13-1, for Ray Moore. The applicant's requesting to divide a tract of 1.11 acre tract to a land of 24.6 acre tract of land. The property to consider for subdivision approval is located on the south side of West Market Street, approximately 1,450 feet west of its intersection with Front Street, and further identified as Johnston County ID number 15080011. Ms. Trenbrough?
This item of business, as well as the next item of business, are both minor subdivisions, so the same parts of the general statutes will apply to both, so I'll only go through that on the first one. First off, let me reference you. This is the News River, and this is the New Bridge that's being replaced now. We're talking about a parcel of land that is immediately within a scale right there. It's on the left-hand side of the road, it's adjacent to Wallace Welding, and it is a piece of land that Red Shirley donated to the downtown development, Smithfield Downtown Development Corporation back several years ago. This piece of land was never intended to be transferred, and so what the applicant is requesting that the land be subdivided back out of the tract that he donated to the development corporation and reinstated that. And Chris Johnson's here from the development corporation to answer any questions as far to that. That first paragraph is a little bit confusing. I'll just interpret that for you. Our ordinance says that any tract of land larger than two acres that is subdivided is a major subdivision and not a minor subdivision. That's what that first paragraph is saying. So this was a several acre tract of land, 24.6 acre tract of land, therefore it constitutes a major subdivision as opposed to a minor subdivision. Minor subdivisions are approved administratively by staff, but major subdivisions have to be approved by the planning board as well as the town council, so that's why it's before you. The proposed division of land begins with a tract of land whose entire area is greater than 10 acres, therefore the planning board recommendation and the city council approval is required. The proposed division creates one 1.1 acre lot with a remainder of 24.6 acres. All lots meet or exceed the Town of Smithfield Unified Development Ordinance standards for newly created lots by virtue of having adequate road frontage and meeting minimum lot sizes. All proposed lots will be served by public water and sewer. Drive way permits must be obtained from NCDOT prior to development of the site. The planning board at its March 6th, I mean, March 7th meeting unanimously voted to approve the approval of the proposed division of land. The town council has now requested to review the petition and make discussion on the preliminary subdivision plat. Attached is a photograph of the property as well as the subdivision plat itself. And Jerry Ball is here. The surveyor is not here. I thought I saw him earlier, but we have reviewed the plat, and it is in standard with the North Carolina general statutes.
Go through that Red Shirley deal again. What did you say about that?
I'll let Chris address it more particularly in regards to Mr. Augman.
If you remember when the Johnston County was running its sewer line on the west side of the river, at the time, my board member Bud Andrews worked with Ray and Red in making the donation to the DSDC, which was approximately 25 acres of land. About two or three months after that, Red called me to his little building over there across the street and said, "Chris, inadvertently, I meant to shave off that acre of land which has already been filled in prior to me, or prior to being donated." And I said, "Well, Mr. Shirley," I said, "if you want to go through the cost and whatever you want to do," I said, "as long as it doesn't cost the DSDC anything, we'd be more than happy to give that back to you." And of course, several years passed, and then Mr. Shirley passed away. I've spoken to Mr. Ball on occasions on the telephone about it, but then Doug approached me, and again, since it was a donated piece of property to a nonprofit, I said, "I don't want to get into the tax legalities of it." And Mr. Narin, Jimmy Narin, was involved in the assistance of our organization in receiving the property, and I said, "As long as his fees and everything, it doesn't cost the DSD anything, we want to honor our word." Like I said, it was only a few months after he had donated the property to us that that one acre should have never gone to us to begin with. It's just been kind of been in limbo until now.
So you actually own it downtown?
The DSDC, yes, sir. And my board's aware of it, and they were aware of it then, and it was kind of an agreement that, you know, if he gave us something, he says, "Oops, I didn't mean to," you know, "within the 25 acres, this one acre shouldn't have ever gone to it. I was thinking it was a separate piece of property," until kind of hindsight.
You know that's a valuable piece of property?
Well, I do, I do. I hope my word, though, is my bond, in the sense that it was one of those things that was not done years later, it was only a few months later, that he said, "Chris, I'd like to have that, but I didn't mean to donate that back." But of course, our intent is not to give it to just Mr. Moore, it's who the applicant is, is to give back to the estate of Red Shirley as well as Mr. Moore, and let them figure out how they want to go about dividing it up to that, because in my opinion, it's, you know...
It was a mutual mistake, it sounds like. You didn't expect to get it?
I didn't expect to get it, and a few months later, he says, "Chris, I didn't mean to give it to you." And I said, "Well, if you want to pay for undoing it, then it's yours," and...
So it's not going to cost you anything to undo it?
I made that perfectly clear to everybody, that, you know, if they want it back, then they have to go through whatever...
You spoke into the administrator of the estate?
Mr. Narin, I've spoken to him on several occasions. I said, and I've basically said the same thing that I just said to you, gentlemen.
About the tenant?
I've said something to the tenant, and I don't want to get into the family decisions of, you know, what their desires are, but basically what the agreement the DSDC had was with Mr. Moore and Mr. Shirley, which is now Mr. Moore and the Red Shirley estate. And that's who we're, that's who my board is giving it back to, and how it gets divvied up is between those entities.
But it's going back to the Shirley estate.
Mr. Narin was involved in creating the estate, and I'm letting an attorney handle that, I'm not...
Do the downtown development, own any more property around town?
In downtown? No, sir.
Around town? Is that the only piece of property?
That's the only piece of property.
Any other questions for Mr. Johnson? Any questions for Mr. Emblert?
Mr. Emblert, your department recommends this action, do they not?
As far as the subdivision plat, it meets the criteria of the Town of Smithfield's major subdivision, in the fact that it has street frontage, it's served by water and sewer, it meets the minimum size and square footage, as well as the frontage property for a B3 commercial lot, which is what this is, so it does meet our criteria.
Any further discussion? Not, do I have a motion only request, which is to review the petition, which we have, and make a decision preliminary of the subdivision plat? So we'll be approving the plat as been recommended, excluding this tract that was not expected and to be given back.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Third item for business is the subdivision request. The applicant's requesting to divide a 1.95 acre tract of land from a 138.41 acre tract of land located on the east side of North Johnston Road, approximately 600 feet south of its intersection with Galilee Road, and further identified as Johnston County Tax ID 15109053. Ms. Trenbrough?
For your reference, the park was located in our EBJ box, and we're not following this map. This is North Johnston Road, this is Galilee Road.
In accordance with the articles of our Unified Development Ordinance, as I explained in the previous, this case, this is just cutting out a little over an acre of land for a lot out of 138 acre tract, so here again, it qualifies as a major subdivision as opposed to a minor subdivision. The proposed division of land begins with a tract of land whose entire area is greater than 10 acres, therefore the planning board and the city council approval is required. The proposed division creates one newly created 1.195 acre lot with a remainder of 138.41 acres. All lots that are created will meet or exceed the Town of Smithfield Unified Development Ordinance standards for newly created lots by virtue of having adequate road frontage and meeting minimum lot size. All proposed lots will be served by private well and septic tank, because this is an R20A residential agricultural district. The planning board at its March 7th meeting voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed division of land, and the town council is now requesting to petition, to review the petition and make a decision in regard to approval of the plat.
Any questions for Mr. Emblert?
Paul, Paul does not own the land.
He is petitioning on behalf of the owner for subdivision. That's quite normal within the course of the property. We've talked with the owner on numerous occasions of this. The owner can retain an agent, which he did, Jerry Ball, to actually apply for the subdivision.
Any further questions, discussion? Not, do I have a motion that we approve this plat as so requested?
Motion, we approve as requested.
Second. Motion is second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Thank you, Ms. Trenbrough.
Thank you.
Item four, consideration of approval to award the street resurfacing project bid. Mr. Branch, I'll recognize you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Manager, Town Council. The 2012-2013 Resurfacing Project consists of 13 streets. You will see on page 68, adjacent to this page, is the list of the streets that are on the project. These streets were picked from the 2006 pavement condition survey that we had done, from the worst streets down to the best streets. The 13 streets are a total of approximately 1.12 miles. I kind of done a little research to give you some history. The past five resurfacing projects that we've done in town, we've paved approximately 15 miles of city streets, which is a big accomplishment. I've talked to a lot of municipalities, and we've done a lot of paving. So a lot of that has to do with, I think in '06, we actually borrowed like $1.5 million to do a big pavement project, and it's paid off. Just wanted to throw that your way. 12 of the 13 streets will receive an inch and a half overlay. One of the 13 streets, Front Street from Broad Street to Dead End, which is the Town Commons, that is the pilot program that I discussed during the council meeting retreat of one of the things that I wanted to start and see if we can implement, and save them some money, and give them some facelifts in town and the streets and stuff, and that's going to be the first proposed, and hope there's many more to come on that. That procedure is a preserving that you put on aged asphalt that gives it a facelift and adds years of service on that pavement. And if you know down at Town Commons, it is rocky, but overall, it's in pretty good condition, so if we can get down there and put this preserving on it, it's going to add a lot of years to it, and it's going to brighten up the Town Commons area and make it look a lot more presentable near Greenway, so that'll be a big accomplishment. We sent out bid packets to 11 licensed contractors. Six of the 11 contractors submitted bids on the project. Turner Asphalt came in as the lowest bidder at $220,342.42. A total amount of the project that we had budgeted was $290,000, so we actually come under, or within our budget on that. I did, Turner was... I did, Turner was, this is their first project for the Town of Smithfield, so I requested references and I called all the references and they got, they got raving results. Just to give you a list, the Town of Holly Springs, Hillsboro, Butner, Zebulon, Wendell, Harborough, NC DOT and Granville Maintenance and Fuplay Arena. And everyone that I contacted, they gave them, gave them raving results.
Where are they from?
They're out of Raleigh. They got Raleigh and then they got a company in South Carolina as well. Tonight, action request is the council's request to award the bid to Turner Asphalt an amount of $220,342.42. Happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Any questions for Mr. Branch?
Their license and bonded and all, everything. Who checks on this to make sure that pavement is what they're laying is what we're supposed to be getting?
Myself and the Public Works Supervisor. We actually...
It's not they're laying two inches?
Inch and a half.
Or inch and a half. How do you check to make sure that we're getting an inch and a half?
During the projects, when they start, we go out, when they gauge their asphalt machines and they set it at an inch and a half and we go back with actual tape and we measure the depth periodically to make sure that we're getting an inch and a half as we go. So we actually stay on the project, inspector does. Full depth patching is the same thing, it's the same process. They'll come in and on the contract, it states that they got to do a five-inch full depth patch. We go in and actually, before they patch it with the base material, we go in and measure it and make sure that it is five inches or better and then we come back and test the compacts and rate with the roller.
Lenny, just curious question. If you have bad spots in that, those streets that have bad dirt under, do you fix those as you go?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, they're marked as they go.
Is this the Powell Bill funds for this year?
That's correct. Now, council reserves the right in our contract, you can add to or take away. I mean, we are under budget, probably $70,000 and we retain the right to increase or decrease the contract up to 25%. And I figured that the 25% comes in around $55,000 that you can increase and still stay within your budgeted amount. So that's basically up to the council's approval. If that's something you guys wanted to do, that is, that is an option if you choose to do that.
Mr. Branch, you know, you and I was talking, is there any way that you can help that Broadway Street, all those cracks in there?
Right now, I wouldn't suggest doing anything major other than crack sealing until after they're 100% completed through there because of the heavy machinery and stuff that's going in. But this is the same thing that, you know, our pavement condition survey was a 2006 survey that is getting kind of outdated and we need to look at the possibility of maybe doing another one to upgrade some of the streets, like Venture Drive is in really bad shape. When they did this, it was a new paved road, it was in excellent shape, but now it's not. You know, it's in bad shape and there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done for that road. So I would strongly suggest in the next year or two that the town council really considers passing a, approving another pavement condition survey when the time's appropriate.
Okay, you hear the request before you, Mr. Naren?
Lenny, it's your opinion that all of these streets need to be repaid?
Yes, sir. If you look at the prices, I mean, we were budgeted $290,000 and it varied, just on my past experience, we kept it within that. We just were actually getting some good prices on the square yardage prices because the company's really hungry and they want to go to work now. I expect that, you know, when the economy picks up, these prices are going to go up, but right now, we're actually getting a lot of bang for a buck with the price of petroleum being as high as it is.
These streets were part of the survey?
Yes, sir.
So they're on our list and every year since that survey, basically to take the politics, if you will, out of it, the council had that survey done and had the roads, I guess, if you will, graded yes by a company and we're following every year as they come up, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Lenny, Councilman Williams mentioned Broadway and you mentioned Venture Drive. I think I'm right. Is that something that we have made any plans for either one of those at this point or is that something you're telling us that we need to look at those?
No, right now, the best case scenario, in my professional opinion, with Broadway being still under construction and there's still a lot of heavy traffic and stuff that's going through there with the heavy machinery and stuff, I would not recommend going in and doing any type of major repairs now. I would strongly suggest let the staff go in and let's crack seal it right now because that's a part of the resurfacing project. And then next year, try to upgrade that on the list because it isn't in really bad shape now. There's a lot of gator and stuff in it and the possibility of maybe moving it up on the list at the council's approval, that is, because it isn't in bad shape, is to move it up and maybe get it on the next resurfacing project next year. That way, the construction process is done and we actually get that roving and road that's already, all the utilities are laid and it'll be a nice completed road at the end of the project.
So these lists that we see that are scheduled, like this list, every year will have a list of these and that's, that was done in 2006?
Yes, sir.
So there is an opportunity that if we wanted to revise those, as an example, if we wanted to revise this one tonight, we could, but we can look at the situation of Broadway once that construction is completed. And I know I've heard Venture Drive mention numerous times, as Councilman Auger said, terrible, but I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yes, sir. That's absolutely correct.
Lenny, can you provide a copy of that, that study to the entire council?
I can, I can. I believe if I'm not mistaken, we've got it on the town website now, I believe. But yes, sir, I'll be, by all means.
And then, of course, Venture Drive is going to be a, if I'm not badly mistaken, a major, major expense, I would think, and it's going to be, probably wipe out two to three years of paving budget, I would imagine. So that's something we would definitely have to look at.
Well, the whole scenario here is that, you know, we are being, we are doing the pavement from a study done in 2006 and over the period of years, some of these streets have been traveling more so than others. And, you know, at least, I think, starting off next year, we need to reevaluate all of the streets, do a different, you know, bring it up so that some of the streets that's really in desperate need can get a better chance of being saved.
That's, that's correct.
Okay, you've heard the request tonight. We're basically approving the bid of $220,342.42 to Turner Asphalt for this resurfacing. Do we have a motion that we accept this bid that's sent to us?
For a move?
Aye.
Motion in second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Town Manager, is there any discussion on Market Street repaid that you know about?
Yes, sir, I believe there is. I don't know the schedule, but I have heard that DOT does plan to resurface that sometime between now and the end of this year. I'll try to find out more, but I have heard that and heard that recently. I heard the engineer mentioned that when he was out looking at the bridge, the Highway 70 Bridge, and mentioned that that project was going to get started. He didn't give me specific dates or contractors, so I'll try to follow up and see if I can get a start date for you.
There is significant conversation while we're on resurfacing projects and power money to reduce our Powell Bill funds and the mix that we have, so we need to be very cognizant of that. If we do have funds left over in a certain budget, we need to make sure we hold those in contention, I would suggest, to the board for just in case those decreases of dramatic proportion happens. Right now, it's a 75-25 match and they want to flip it, suggested to flip it to a 25-75, which means we'll lose about 50% of our funding.
Not only lose the funding, but turn over more streets to us.
That's right. That's correct. There is a new thing that has come out, in fact, today, I saw it, of how we're supposed to do our, how surfacing projects and things of that nature, reporting entity, I guess it is, and it's all computerized now. There's nothing else in paper form. It's all has to be done by computers to Raleigh and so that's something the clerk and our staff will have to be working on, so I just saw that out today. So anyway, there we go. Item number five, motion to approve contract services agreement for other post-employment benefits and studies from the Kavanaugh-McDonald Consulting LLC. Mr. Manager, I recognize you on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, this study is required to take place every three years and for a jurisdiction our size, we are required to do this under the GASB accounting standards 43 and 45. And it would appear that we have to do one for this upcoming year. This is, would be our third year, so we're running out of our prior years where you can rely on a previous study for up to three years. So we've got to do a new study to have that for, completed by the end of this fiscal year and we have time to do that. The company we're recommending is one that's been acquired by the league. They're one of the best in the country, specialized, a very specialized service, and that's the Kavanaugh-McDonald Company. Mayor, their rates are very competitive and we've talked to them, haven't met with them, but talked to them. They are out of town. They seem to do a good job and we've estimated our price to be approximately $4,400. There could be a little bit more, sometimes depending on what research they have to do based on some of the other benefits, primarily with law enforcement. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer, but we feel like we can do it for the $5,000 or less, probably closer to the $4,400 figure. So with that, I would recommend approval with the Kavanaugh firm up to the $5,000 and I think that will be enough for us to complete the study.
Okay. Any questions for the manager on this request? This is a requirement through the GASB Accounting Services. Did I understand?
Yes, sir.
I gather this was something that was not on our budget radar the last couple of years?
No, sir. I, no, I haven't seen it. In fact, I don't think it came up until the end of, maybe the end of last year, basically as a requirement that we had to do it. So I'm not really sure. It looks like it was about three years ago when the last one was done. I'm not sure if this group did it, but I think they did. But I know that our auditors brought it up to our attention during this year's, the last audit and said, "Hey, you're going to need to do that. You're good for this past year, but you'll need to do it for this year." So that's when we pursued this, pursued this option.
What do they show us? What do they...
They really show you what liabilities you may have, like for retirement benefits is the primary one.
What length of period?
Well, they look, well, they, they look, well, I think their period is 20 years, but they look at your, you know, obviously your census, the data of your employees and their age and they give you, you know, just a study basically of what your costs could be going forward. In the past, you didn't have to have that report or have that liability. Now it is required to have that, basically.
So it shows us how much we're on the hook?
That's right. That's right. So you have a study, so when you have that, that's a required number in your audit to have that liability listed there. Didn't used to be, now it is, and this is the basis for providing that number.
Question. How often do they report to you? Have you said that?
This study?
Yes.
It's just once every three years.
Once every three years.
Right. And I think the idea there is that your census data, that is your employees that they're studying, you know, for two or three years, it should be fairly consistent. Obviously, we'll change a little bit every year, but not enough to really impact your longer-term liability. But after three years, I feel like, all right, you need to go back and take another look and reevaluate. So that's why it's a, you know, a three-year renewal, basically.
So it's why it's supposed to take into consideration during budget time?
Yes, sir.
Three years. Okay. Any other questions? Not do I hear a motion with the manager's request?
I'm over it. We approve the request.
Second. Motion in second. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay. Item six, report on the update of downtown parking issues. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, I may have the police chief join, join me or at least weigh in as appropriate. I think you've got my materials based on the parking. As you know, the parking issue came up recently, primarily talking about the downtown parking. And I think, you know, with some of the activity that the police chief has done in the last 30 days, you know, with, you know, some, I'll call it partial enforcement, I think he spared as much time and effort as, you know, they can realistically without pulling, you know, patrolmen off the streets and other patrols to police the area. My feeling is that it's, that's pretty much taken care of, the need, maybe not perfectly, but I think it's addressed the need for the congested or parking or the violators. I think the message has been sent. So there's different ways to address that and I think as, in terms of a police patrol approach, I think that's worked. The next step is, I think there's been some frustration in, you know, years past about, you know, citations being written without the follow-up, which really we're, we have a very short line as to how much follow-up we can do because these are more civil in nature and so it's a citation by citation where, you know, you've got to go and enforce it in a, in a, basically a civil court to collect. Some of these fines are only $50 to $75, depending on when they're paid and what the, you know, the fine adds up to. So they're small amounts, so by the time you file an individual, independent civil action to collect $50, $75, it becomes not very cost-effective. Unlike a criminal matter, which kind of naturally goes through the system without a large filing cost, the money tends to flow in a little bit easier. So that's the difference there. There are some, some possibilities in terms of what you might do to ramp up that activity if that's, if that's the council's desire. I've laid out a few, a few options for you, following some of the research that the chief put together for us. Also, you have an ordinance from Greensboro, if you were able to take a look at that. Basically, one of the, one of the, I think, most effective ways has been the booting and/or towing end-of-the-line kind of remedy, which is basically you still write the citation and/or you boot the vehicle and then basically that obviously requires action to, to get the boot removed, which allows you to collect on your, your fine very quickly. If the boot's not removed or the car remains there, then the car's towed upon typically the police chief's order to contracted for towing firm service and then the owner of the vehicle would have to go to recover the vehicle, have to pay the storage fee, the towing fee and the fine that was placed on the car to get that back. So that's also very effective. But I think more importantly, this isn't just really a money effort to collect money, though that will be the result of this, I think, to be more effective on your collection. It's really to avoid people parking down there for two hours. And I think it would have, I think it would have that impact if the council wants to go to that little bit more intense enforcement mechanism. Chief, I don't know if you want to weigh in on other possibilities. I know we had talked a little bit about metering. I know the town's been through that going back some 20 years. It didn't seem like there was much traction for the metering, but that is a possibility that certainly we should put on the table as, as a revenue, you know, possibility and certainly with meters, it's a lot easier with, for the officer, they don't have to go around and mark the tires, they just look for the meters that are expired and they can write the ticket immediately at that point. There are some firms on the metering side that will do it for a revenue percentage, so they, they provide the meters at their cost and the monitoring of those meters, very electronic in nature, so the cost is very little or almost zero. I hate to say, ever say zero because it never seemed to come out that way, but that's what they say in terms of installing the meters and administering them for us and then we split the revenue with them. So in theory, with little effort, you, we could place meters and have that enforcement. And of course, if metering were a consideration, it doesn't have to be everywhere, the town can certainly pick where it would like to place the meters. It may not be all streets, it may only be certain streets where the meeting, the meters will be appropriate. I know there's been a little bit of discussion with Chris's group in downtown Smithfield and surprisingly, I don't know that it was overwhelmingly popular, but I think some of the merchants who attend those meetings really saw, saw the effectiveness of those and didn't seem diametrically opposed to the metering, but I'm not going to speak for Chris or the board. I just, that was my feeling, hearing their, sitting in a conversation. I was looking for you, Chris. I don't know if that's, I know you've been through it before, but...
It was all over.
That's true. Yeah. So anyway, with the metering, chief, I don't know if there's any other options you might want to put on the table.
That pretty much covers it. There is a local bill working its way through the legislature right now tying unpaid parking fines to DMV. When you go to get your license renewed, it doesn't get renewed until your tickets are paid. However, at this time, the way that's working its way through, that wouldn't affect Smithfield unless that gets changed to something that would apply statewide. There is a way to weigh in with our legislators to tell them that we'd be interested in that and we would support that. Not sure how far that would go, but that's something the council could do if they chose to. My experience with this same type of issue was where you have a combination of parking meters and everything was two-hour parking, but you also had parking meters. And at the end of the day, when we had three or four... And at the end of the day, when we had three or four citations, however many the council wanted to put together and say, after you don't pay this many or this much money value, since some tickets are different money values than others, at that point, your vehicle's placed on a list and it's towed, and you're going to have to pay to get that back and pay up on your parking tickets. I've been involved with a community who did that for a number of years, was very successful at it. Everybody accepted it and really had no problems.
Chris, you need to be heard on downtown or anything? Got a feeling, comment?
Well, pretty much like this entire board that I'm standing before, my board has the same mix of feelings and emotions about it. Some people want to have an aggressive enforcement, some people want to have a lax enforcement, especially when it comes to their employees and their own vehicles. I think it's my organization's responsibility to educate the employees and, as well as the business owners, of the importance of downtown parking and make it as friendly as possible, but make sure that it's not occupied by the, their own employees, because I think that's probably the biggest abuser of the two-hour limit is our own self. And we've had, we had a very vibrant discussion about that, and I showed my board the areas within downtown, that it's less than a half a block away that they can park all day, but yet it's not in front of their own buildings. So I can't, I can't really speak one way or the other. I mean, I know that there is obviously some abuses in some cases. I know one or two cars that have been parking in one location for quite some time, and it is, it's kind of like that blatant abuse that you can just kind of turn your nose at, but I wish I could have a better answer than what I've just given you. But I'm open to whatever suggestions and willing to work in getting the message out to the merchants. That's, I feel like, the best key for me.
Well, Chris, I'd like to see your organization continue to discuss it and really see if the downtown merchants as a group can come to a consensus as to what their feelings are.
I agree. I mean, we're kind of putting y'all on the spot of solving a problem that they're not willing to address and solve themselves, and that's the way I look at it. So it's not really fair for this board to have to bear and shoulder that responsibility. However, I will, I will bring that to my board at the next board meeting, and if you'd like for me to come back with a response of that. There's been some out-of-the-box thinking regarding that, but from, you know, parking decks to having paid parking in various lots and things, and I just don't see that as an answer either, because when you can go a half a block and pay for, and park all day for free, I think it's, I hate to say the enforcement probably is the only answer, but obviously that comes at a cost too, so I respect what that is.
I think I share with you, back in the mid-eighties, I worked with First Citizens Bank and the Trust Department downtown Raleigh, and there was a study done that the average downtown parking space was worth thirty-two thousand dollars in retail sales. So it just seems to me that the merchants would not want to park in front of their store. And that was back in early to mid-eighties. I don't know if that number's gone up or down now.
Unfortunately, everybody wants the laws applied to everybody else except for themselves. And that's, that's the case with the merchants, because I know each and every one of the cars and who owns them and where they work at, and it's, it's. We'll do a diligent effort in the next couple of months to bring that to their attention, because the last thing I want to see, in my personal opinion, is the booting and the aggressive nature, which obviously has to take place to get, to make it serious, but I think we also don't want to send that signal to visiting shoppers to, you know, because that is, I think, lends to giving us more of a black eye than we would rather have. But I do, like I said, I do know there's blatant abuse right now, so.
How's the rest of the board feel about maybe Chris's group can come back with recommendations from the merchants as to possible solutions, options?
Let me just say publicly to the press here, I mean, a study was done about, about seven or eight years ago, and it was paid by the DSDC, the town of Smithfield, as well as Johnston County. And the end result was that there was not a parking problem. Yes, there's, there's times during the day that it's more demand than others. However, there are plenty of areas around the core of the downtown Third Street block that people can park in and walk less than a block and get to whatever destination less, shorter than any distance out at the front of the Walmart to the front door. The point is, is maybe not in front of their own business or the business they're going to, but there's plenty of parking.
Why are the home builders so strident about not letting people park on that empty lot over there? Is that under that lot that we don't?
I think it was a liability issue and a cleanliness issue, and I have, I've spoken to Sherry with the home builders before about allowing to do that, and at one time, they were not agreeable to that, about allowing us to use it. However, it may be something worthwhile, worth revisiting, and have kind of the same agreement that the town has with Allen Wellens regarding the parking space between the Ava Garden Museum and what is now Plus Plus Consignment.
I don't think the liability could be taken care of very easily.
Liability and cleanliness and just upkeep and things of that nature, and that's, that's something that I've recently mentioned to, to the director within the past thirty days, and she said that they would be more than happy to revisit that, so. But again, I know people that, you can see it from their front door of their business, and it might as well be in Raleigh. I mean, you know, it's just, it's just human nature, it's tough to break. But Mr. Ogman, right across us, right next to that parking lot, right where the old BB&amp;T, every one of those own-street parking spaces is wide open at any time of the day, you know, so, you know, if they're not willing to park in that lot, you know, they're sure as heck not going to be willing to park right there and catty-corner from the, from the post offices, is, again, it's, we don't have a parking problem, we have a parking perception problem.
Well, I agree with the mayor. I think that your group should maybe spearhead this. I do know that in reading the packet, the police chief made it pretty clear that if we go to an enforcement type on a regular basis, we're talking about one officer fifty percent of their time over a year's time, period, through the pretty substantial costs associated with enforcement down there. I also think that, you know, it's probably a handful of folks that know that we're not doing what the signs say, but I think we should probably also make sure we have conversation with the county and the sheriff's department. And I don't know if that's something that you can undertake for us, but, you know, it's obviously a difficult question to solve easily, other than asking people to do what they're supposed to do, which, as you said, abusers or whatever you want to call them, a lot of them, you know, are working in businesses there, so. I know the mayor has a business downtown, and obviously we'd look for directions from your group, because it really affects your group more than.
One thing that I've emailed Mr. Branch about the signs, and something that my board is looking at doing, is the number of signs that are downtown that says two-hour parking, because it really doesn't say the time limit, as I understand it, it just says two-hour parking. And what we hope to do, because I, in my wife's business, I've had several people either after five o'clock or on the weekends, ask about the two-hour parking signs, because people are seeing them. And I think the, you know, maybe revisiting and going back and saying, this only applies between eight o'clock AM and five o'clock PM, or whatever the term and time is, that doesn't solve the problem that we're talking about tonight, but I mean, at least it's a step in the right direction, and we won't have to continue looking for solutions.
So Paul, you, I think you had mentioned that you contacted the county manager and actually had discussions with him already, from a county staff level, so forth, so. Was that, I mean?
Yeah, he said he would take care of it, and it's, I understand that he did send something out to his staff to have them be aware of it, try and park on their own destination areas.
And I spoke with the sheriff two weeks ago about this, this topic, and he said he would, he would check into it. Again, the intent, I think, a lot of times, is people pull up into a parking space, whether they're business owners, with the expectation of only being there for fifteen, twenty minutes and leaving, and something happened inside, and they get pulled away, and before you know it, they're in there for three hours, and not intentionally saying that, I plan on being there, but we all get, you know, go in someplace and then get pulled aside and have to do something else before you know it, the time limit's expired, so.
I agree with the recommendation that Councilman Ashley made about following up with the downtown development group, and I would also recommend that we continue to follow the Senate bill that's mentioned in our literature to see how that plays out as well.
So is that a consensus, just to continue? If that's a consensus of the group, then that's what we'll do, Mr. Manager. Chris, if your group will get back with us, we appreciate the follow-up, and then we'll go from there. Okay. We got item seven that was added, request for approval of the resolution number 521 to protect state revenues. This is the addition packet that was handed out to you. Mr. Manager, I guess you're home now?
Yes, sir. Mayor, you can see from the packet that this is just a general resolution, really just to weigh in with our local delegation and even other members of the Senate, or at least the committee that may be considering, the finance committee that may be considering this tax reform bill on both the Senate and the House side. I think many of you have heard, seen, and/or read the newspaper about some of the bills that are floating around, and if not a bill, just the conversations that are being had at our General Assembly in Raleigh during this session. I know I personally have probably heard four different presentations on the possible reforms that may take place, and they're all very general in nature, and really, the presenters, all of whom are either Senate or House members, really did not have an idea as to what they thought was going to come out. So it seems like they're going from a large conversation with lots of discussion, and then trying to end with a specific result of some sort of reform, whether it's the entire package or a portion of that package, it's hard to say. And what I think I fear is, I fear that there might be a rush to get something done, even if it's just get something done, as opposed to the quality of a true, well-thought-out tax reform system. And I think the bill that came out and went through, I think, the first reading and is incommending now on the Senate side, and that Senate Bill 394, I think really opened a lot of eyes. The League sent out late last week an analysis of how that would impact municipalities. And I think you saw the results across the state, that was some three-hundred-and-twenty million dollars in possible lost revenues to just municipalities. And looking at Smithfield, the number was seven-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand dollars. That was the, what we would lose. They did not have much on the side of what we might pick up in terms of sales tax. I think they tried to do some set-off, so that's, that's hard to say if it would be that much, but I also say that could just be a minimum too. So I think that's a starting point, we just don't know. But the net loss would be significant. And I think we know in this, in this budget environment, that would be quite a, quite a loss. Recently, and as recently as even last week, at our, at the town hall meeting we went to in Clayton, some of our local delegations said that they thought the mood was to protect and leave neutral the municipality's revenue. But also, it was also said at that meeting that there was also, you better, you better pay attention closely, because things are moving very quickly, on both the Senate and the House. So I think we're, we are exposed, as are all local governments, to some change that may or may not be, may or may not be part of our budget. I certainly hope that they'll take small steps and not large steps, even if the reform is needed and will be eventually embraced. I just hope that they're, they're mindful of the impact it will have on all of our cities, specifically Smithfield for us. In that regard, Mayor, I've put together, I've given the information from the League, which I took some of their message points from to include in our resolution, and I've put together a resolution, and certainly any input is welcome, that would address these issues, that if this version or another one passes from this chamber, then we can send it to our local delegation. Also, if you didn't see it, I believe there's going to be a discussion in this, on the Senate Committee tomorrow morning, sometime around mid-morning, I saw it today from the League. So it is moving, at least for discussion, so it would be a timely document to move forward to our delegation at the earliest, at the earliest timeframe. So Mayor, with that, you've got the resolution there. Again, I tried to keep it bullet-pointed and fairly simple, but really just a suggestion to pay close attention, and with your first line of sight, when they're considering these bills, is to check the neutrality of the bill with regard to our revenues from the state.
Okay. I think it is very important that we send a message, at least our position, in form of resolution. There may be some tweaking of the resolution. I know I noticed a couple of things that you might want to change, but in inference of the message, I think we can tweak this resolution, but we definitely need to make the commitment from this board to send a message to Raleigh that we want to protect our revenues. So if we can put that in some form of a motion, if the board so chooses, there may be some amendments to the resolution itself. Mr. Assistant, I see you marking, you may have some comments.
Well, I do. I don't have a problem with the general concept of the resolution, I think we need to do it. But I think that our resolution should be that any tax reform done up there simply holds us harmless. I am, I am not interested in playing politics, whether we're going to favor a sales tax or anything like that in this resolution. And here again, I've just read this, we just got it tonight, but it looks like bullet points one and two may be favoring some type of sales tax, but I like bullet point three, any effort to modernize should ensure that all municipalities are held harmless. And then I like bullet point four, which is actually asking to give us some more autonomy, the ability to do some things.
Yeah, I think the League's position on those first two, I think they're really just kind of facing reality, that it looks like the shift, and the most popular view right now is to, you know, lower income and rely more on sales tax, but expand what you can. You know, services that are not taxable now by sales, expand that. I mean, that seems to be a common theme amongst all these bills floating through this. I think that's really just trying to address that, but, you know, again, if you, if you want to stay away from sales tax, that's certainly, that's fine too, but just to give you an idea of why that's in there, from the League's point of view, I think they're just facing what they believe to be the reality of the situation.
Increasing sales tax is a lightning rod for political discussions. As a council, we are, we're not, we're unaffiliated in terms of the voters, and I would rather stay away. A lot of folks have believed that sales tax is aggressive or it's a bore. A lot of folks feel, like apparently the League does, that sales tax is the reality of the future. I think we can accomplish what we want by staying out of that political arena.
So you are suggesting this resolution be revised?
Yes, sir. And it looks like, to me, I don't like bullet points, the first two. Actually, no, crosses, plus seconds.
Oh, at the bottom, bottom of the page?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay, I was looking up here. Okay, sorry. All right, okay.
How does the board feel if we could resolve to send a message to protect our revenues as stated in the, whereas in the beginning with further resolution, bullet points expanded upon back to this council? I think it's imperative we make, and we make that motion tonight, the timeliness of the matters, since they are definitely meeting tomorrow, and we can, Mr. Manager, maybe you can get with some others, and we can get something out to the board, so that we, so we can go ahead and move forward with the agreement tonight, if the board so chooses. That's your choice. How do y'all feel about that? Would you rather have it revised in front of you before we make such a resolution? What's wrong with the where-as?
Nothing.
Nothing? I'm saying the top part is fine, I think.
Just cut off the bottom part and just pass it. Eliminate the first two bullet points?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we pass this bill, pass this resolution, deleting what we're calling the first two bullet points at the bottom of the page.
Okay, any further discussion? Mr. Manager, you understand?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion in second. All those in favor, aye? Supposed.
And Paul, just one suggestion. As we heard from all three of our delegates at the meeting last week, they don't want just something to say that's going to hurt us, they want some details. just something to say that's going to hurt us, they want some details behind it. So if you could maybe just put together, you know, what this would mean for us, and we've got a dollar figure in here, but, you know, where's that coming from, what it is?
I can send that tax.
That doesn't have to be part of the resolution, but it could come along with it as supporting, you know, as part of your email or whatever goes to it.
Okay. I will move to item eight as an add-on, request for approval of resolution number 522, terminating closeout of the S.T. Wooton contract for Part A of the Smithfield Crossing Project. Mr. Manager?
Mayor, again, I know this is new, fairly new for tonight, but I think I kind of prefaced it last week, or a week ago, in my last couple of weekly reports, expecting this to come down, and we did receive this letter just last Thursday or Friday of last week. Basically, Mayor, if you recall, in our Crossing Project, we've got the, what I've called the Part A, or everybody's called the Part A, which is the Wooton contract, and if you look at the attached document, that's basically the orange portion, which is mainly the ramp in the industrial, or the ramp in Highway 95, and then just that beginning new hook area that would lead to what's now, that's a new part, but what's now, we recognize as Industrial Park Drive. That was the Part A, or the Wooton portion of the contract. They've been out there, apparently have done a pretty good job in what they could do. They've performed some, I think it was some 57% of their contract, and they got to the point where it went as far as they could do, and then they have to wait for the second part of the contract, or what's been labeled as the Part B portion, and again, if you look at the diagram, that would be the yellow portion of the contract, and that's where we've had some delays with the PLT portion of the contract. And in summary, Mayor, the delays are basically based on a couple of general areas. One are the relocations of utilities, found, easement utilities found in the right-of-way, some right-of-way acquisition, but primarily utility relocation work that, and a lot of these contracts, you'll see when DOT does them, they go ahead and they take care of those before the contract even starts. But if they don't issue a contract, they get the power lines, they get the phone lines, they get the gas lines, they get all those things moved before they get any kind of contract equipment out there. Not always the case, and certainly not required, but that typically happens. In DOT, we've talked to them about this, they say they don't even issue contracts now without taking that step first for these very reasons. So, and you all know that stretch of land very well, it's very crowded, very congested with utilities out there. So it's been, it's been very trying in a lot of ways to get those relocated, to get quick responsive actions from the, from the utility owners who have to move their own utilities, and certainly somewhat costly, just the basic relocation cost, but really it's more of a timing issue. So it's really is not so much as construction surprises or other problems on the construction side, it's really primarily based on those utility locations. And then a few issues with some of the right-of-way acquisitions, some of the lines changed, as a result, the utilities having to be relocated to different areas. That's been a little bit of a delay, but really, in the scheme of things, that's been a more minor delay than the utility relocations at this point. So, anyway, just to summarize why, what the delay means here and now. The good news is, is that this will not cost us any money. All these improvements are on the DOT portion of that road, that is all DOT roadway. So DOT, they have been administering this portion, the Part A portion of the contract. This contract is funded primarily by FHA funds, and it will, those same funds will be reallocated to the new contract if this is approved. They're hoping to avoid some exposure, and it could be delay cost, remobilization cost, or certainly there's any liability for any accidents that may occur on those roadways during this time while they're down and can't perform any work. So Wooton would like to do this also, because it takes them off responsibility for that stretch of roadway. Apparently, when you're a contractor, you actually own that roadway, and you're responsible for it until the project is complete, and then DOT, you know, takes possession of that roadway again. So I guess the good news is, it won't cost us any funds, and the DOT will administer it, they will rebid it and advertise it, and they'll time that new contract, again, if it's approved, to take place at a timeframe, so that when the new contractor, if it is a new contractor, won't be waiting for the Part B to be finished, they'll have a better idea of when that will be complete, and they can award that contract, and then allow the contractor or new contractor to start their Part A work and finish it up as soon as possible following Part B. So again, kind of a, a lot of hoops to jump through, but I think Wooton is uncomfortable with their status. Their closeout cost is actually very minimal for as long as they've been out there. The other cost of the contract is really just materials and construction and labor costs for work that's been done under the contract. So really, all said and done, the closeout makes a lot of sense. And again, this is, Wooton is on board with it, DOT is on board with it, and they're asking for our consent to, again, terminate, cancel that contract, and allow them to relet the contract, you know, in the next couple of months here.
Paul, I'm not really clear. The map that we're looking at, which the folks in the audience, I don't think can see, the yellow is Part B.
Yes, sir, that's right.
And what they're requesting is Part A, which is in the red, would be delayed.
That's right.
So we're going to continue on with Part A.
Or Part B, the yellow.
I'm sorry, Part B.
Right.
And then, at some future date, Part A is going to be done. How are we going to, how are we going to build a roundabout out there and do all of that in the yellow area if the red is not done?
Well, the sequence of this is, the yellow's got to be complete before they can finish the, finish the orange, basically. So right now, Wooton, who is the Part A portion, they're just waiting until they can start their next phase, which now looks like it might not be until August or September. So DOT and Wooton, and they both agree, you know, feel like they can cut the exposure of Wooton, reduce any potential liability that would go toward that contract, which would be us and the FHA money that's used to fund that portion, by just canceling the contract, ending it, re-advertising, and then getting somebody on board who, as soon as the Part B portion is completed, they can jump in there and then finish, you know, the orange portion. So really, what you're doing is you're removing Wooton from it, I mean, they could re, they could rebid it and be the new contractor also, but you're removing their exposure during these months of waiting, while they're waiting for the yellow portion to be finished. The sequence right now is all on the yellow portion. So all that work is there, they're waiting for that, waiting for that to occur. And just for the scheduling purposes, when they do finish the, they won't be finished with the roundabout completely, but they hope by early July to be able to reroute the traffic on the entire yellow portion, that roundabout. It won't involve the actual round, I mean, the big U there to go around in that new space, and that's how all traffic will be re, or diverted during that phase. Once they do that, then they're hoping they can work on the roundabout outside that scope of traffic, get that finished up until that, you can see where the yellow meets the red, until where that meets, and then at that time, the new contractor, whoever that may be, would come in and finish up the contract. And just for your information, really, the last part of this contract is mainly just resurfacing and paving. A little bit of improvements here and there, but primarily resurfacing and paving of all that orange or red area is the last part of that contract.
Well, Paul, what my concern is, if we cancel this contract, and then you start another one, you'd think that it will cost about the same, they won't, costs won't balloon. It, you know, this Wooton contract has been here for, what, two years working out there, and all of a sudden, they're decided to cancel the contract, call, for whatever reason, and they may see something that we don't see, and when you go back and say, we need to finish this contract, and you put it out again, it may be ballooned up, you don't think it will?
No, you're absolutely right, and the price could go up, but two things. One, they could do that under the present contract because of the delay, they could ask for a price adjustment based on that delay. So they could get the benefit of any increase in asphalt cost, they could already do that. Second thing is that because it's a DOT portion of the road, they will be responsible for any of those additional costs, not the town. And they've made that clear, if you look at the letter that's in that packet, the one I sent out in the last week, they say it's their cost, their project, they understand that. Anything additional over the contract as it exists right now will be, they'll absorb those costs based on the DOT will. So we have a little bit of protection there.
That's my understanding, that we're out of it as far as cost on the, on the Part A, is that correct?
Yes, sir, it's, essentially, that was an 80%, 20% match, but I think they've kind of covered our, we have already covered our 20% in the sense of the entire, entire contract cost. That was the FHA money of, I believe it was right at $950,000, and that is what's being used for that portion of the contract.
Paul, have they given an indication of how long Part A will take once they start? Yeah, my concern is, it...
About two months.
Well, my concern is, they're, in this letter that I'm looking at, it says, will not be scheduled to start until approximately November 1st of 2013. And of course, that's during the peak retail time in that area, and that was obviously a topic of conversation we had, is what we wanted to avoid. And, you know, if they go in there and start that work on November the 1st, it's going to be a detrimental effect, correct? And I don't know who came up with that type date, but they weren't thinking about what we're thinking about.
Well, I think that's something we could work out with, with the new contract, to have, just like the old one had, have a break for the holiday shopping timeframe. And the reason that date's in there, it's not because of, it's because they're looking at the complete completion of the Part B portion of the project, that's all that date's tied to. And we even met, I think it was, what was it, today, this morning, with the entities there, and they think in the next 30, 45 days, that the Part B contractor has a much better idea as to when they will be through with it, and that date could easily move up, and we're all hoping it'll move up 30 days or 45 days. We can't say that or commit to that, but that's what everyone's hope is, that we can do that. But if, even if it is November 1, I don't see any reason why we couldn't have the same terms in there that we had in the present contract, that they work around or they close it down during certain weeks during the holiday shopping timeframe.
Paul, the costs that are listed in this memo from the Secretary, or whatever, that states it's the responsibility of the town. If this is relet, and I don't know what some of these costs are, I mean, I see it listed, but I don't know what some of it means. Is that something that we're going to have to pay again, some of these costs?
No, these are all, this is all work already performed, construction work, not overlapping work.
So there's signs and support costs, those are permanent signs?
That's right.
So those are the permanent signs, okay.
Or signs that'll be, they can reuse if they're detour, whatever kind of signs. These are all things, and you can see there's very little, work already accomplished and billed to the town, the $19,000, the current retainage, that's basically just construction work, you know, that's just haven't been paid out, that was retained, as they typically do. So very little signs and support cost, that again, that's all, and I think the letter indicated that will be turned over to DOT, basically, so they'll take that over. So that's all, that's not redundant work, or in your opinion, like you're thinking it might be paying for something twice, that's all construction work they've done, and Wooton's done a good job when they were able to get out there and work, so. I was actually very surprised that the, the project closeout was only $2,500, so I was actually, I think DOT was satisfied with that amount, too.
And that was going to be my next question. I know it's only $2,500, but what exactly is that for?
I think just clean up on what they've got.
Penalty?
It's not penalties, it's more just clean up. I don't know if there's moving some equipment, Paul?
What it was, this was what called, you were in control, but it was standing out there, and that was, they had some things they had to do, and that's the policy associated, and then get back to mobilizing, and then go back to making this work. So it's the work that's actually what we want to accomplish, and that's our given. It was minimal, the time track, and we won't close it out, and that would still be an element of our item.
Paul, since you stepped into this, what is the best-case scenario on us completing Part B?
When?
Date.
Based on the current schedule that was given to us at last month's progress meeting, we asked for an update from the contractor, and to adjust that time schedule to accommodate the beginning of school shopping timeframe, there's about a week there when, you know, they have the tax free, first weekend in August, I think it is, we asked him to readjust the schedule. But bottom line, his schedule is showing a beneficial delivery of the project in September with final completion in November. That's why DOT has the November date in there. But beneficial completion, which means traffic can be turned on to the project, would be in September. That's as of the most recent schedule we have right now. But as the manager mentioned, utility relocation, it's still the key factor. We still have CenturyLink that's got to get in there, we've been waiting now three weeks on CenturyLink alone, and it's just, there's the, the nature of construction in public utilities now, it's just very difficult to obtain mobilization and get the work and coordinate it between the different entities out there. For example, all the work that Progress Energy had, we got caught up in the Duke merger, and then once we got that sorted out, we got caught up with a thing called Hurricane Sandy, and they deferred all their folks up to the northeast. They came back in January, and we, they got them out there on the job, and they, just three weeks ago, finished their work, and now CenturyLink had to wait for Progress to finish, set the new poles so they could move their equipment to. So right now, barring any other unforeseen excavation that digs up utilities other than ones that have already been out there and relocated, we should be ready to go as soon as CenturyLink gets their stuff done.
And you've been waiting on them three weeks, and they're still not there?
We've called, I called, I asked, I've started calling today myself, the engineers been calling them and emailing them on a regular basis, and they've been responding and say, we're coming, but they haven't shown up yet.
And that, you have an idea of how long? That's the only thing left to do, is that correct? The CenturyLink is the only utilities that we have left to deal with?
That we know of.
And do we have a feel for how long that will take them, once they actually start that?
It, a week to two weeks, it's not programmed for a long period of time.
So, and just one more question, as far as the Part A, if we were to go along with this, Paul, I guess for both Pauls, as far as the allocated federal money, I guess it says, Part A, 80% of that would be paid for out of federal money. If we were to go along with this, is there any impact to the federal dollars?
No.
And we're absolutely 100% sure of that?
I'm as sure as I can be, which is, I'm taking the word of FHA and inform DOT on that question.
Okay.
You know, keep in mind, I mean, at the end of the day, this is a DOT road, and they're going to fix it. So we don't have to sign or do anything, we can say, guys, we're done with this, go away, and they're going to fix that road, because it's their road and their ramp, and they have to. So at the end of the day, it's their road, their responsibility. So, and they know that, and they've been actually very accommodating, that's why if you read the letter carefully, you'll see, they pretty much say, you know, we're going to fix it. So I'm not, not too worried about that, I mean, I think we're, our obligation is what it's been from the beginning on that, you know, they seem to understand that. And we had, the first time we talked about this, we had that, that was the first thing that we touched on, what are those increased costs and that sort of thing.
And I guess that's what concerns me a bit, is that's your, that's your statement you just made about, it's their road, because this whole entire project was sold to me by stating if we didn't do something to that ramp, that the DOT would close that ramp. That's what was told to me, and that's how it was sold to me, is if we did not do something, the DOT was going to close that ramp. So, if we get out of this contract now, what are the chances of the DOT coming back and saying, okay, guys, we're going to close the ramp? Since that's how it was sold to me to move forward with this. And Paul, I know you weren't here, but Paul, I'm... And Paul, I know you weren't here, but Paul Imbler, you were here. So I guess I'm asking you now, this question. What, I know the likelihood is highly unlikely, but the political climate right now is at an all-time high and very unpredictable as far as monies go.
Well, I can only establish what I know to be a fact. When we awarded the contract, we actually had to accelerate the bidding process to secure the FHA funds. When I say FHA, I mean Federal Highway Administration funds. They, those funds are to the town of Smithfield, they're not to DOT. And the only way we could secure those through the federal government was that we had to go ahead, bid the contract, have a contractor so we could award it, because until that time, we were not assured that the money would be reserved for us. We had to do that. So my understanding, and I'd have to pull out the, the big agreement that we signed with DOT, but that money is actually in the town of Smithfield's name now. So although there's no disbursement made from the Federal Highway Administration until the project is complete, in other words, we've established interim financing to pay for that as it has gone along.
Correct.
And so I guess the federal government can do what it wants to, but right now, we have a contract that says that we've got an 80/20, 80% federally funded project, 20% locally funded, and that totals the number that the manager mentioned there a little while ago, can't recall it right off the top of my head, but that's the best I can speak to it.
Okay. I know, Mr. Mayor, I know you've put hours and hours into this project, and I appreciate that. But question I have, and I don't know who to ask this to, but what if we deny this request? Then what?
I mean, I think it's our contract. I think, I think ultimately, we would expedite ourselves to, to claims from Wooton for, again, remobilization, delay, and price changes. But I mean, the contract would still sit there, but I'm not sure we would enjoy the, how that contract would, would roll out for us.
And if we do approve this request, we won't face that?
I think it's a good relationship that we will still hold with, which has carried most of the weight out there in this particular ramp, the Part A. And DOT, as the manager has alluded, is recommending this. They came to us, asking us to, so we hold the contract. And they came to us, asking us to release them, and they would rebid it at their exposure, not really at our exposure.
That's right.
So I, I think it would be in our best interest to do that on behalf of Wooton, to get Part B completed so that they could come back and remobilize on Part A. You're right, Mr. Harris, you know, the hours we've spent on this, I just pray I can see this project finished before I die. But I've been on the board for 16 years as mayor in capsule, and just started conversation when I first got on the board. So that tells you how long conversations have been going, but for the last eight years, we've been dealing with this, it seems. But I do think this will help expedite the project. If we can release Wooton, get them back, recommit it after we finish Part A. That would be my recommendation for what I know about the project.
Well, you can see the board is concerned.
Sure.
It has taken a long time, it has dropped.
But I, and I will say, I met with USDA the other day, when they were in the office here, talking about Thunder. And they said the only thing to our credit that has held this project together is the town of Smithfield. That other entities, even our own consultants, have really not helped us survive in this project, but our staff and the commitment that the town has had to this project for our commerce in that area has held this project together. So, you know, we do have a staff that's looking after our best interest. And we finally got some progression moving forward, and so we need to keep that moving and assess it. If it gets into the Christmas season, obviously, we're going to stop that. Retail's got to happen out there. But we do need to continue to move work and get it done.
Well, with a heavy heart, I make a motion that we approve this request.
I'll second that, Chris. And we need to emphasize to DOT that the shopping season is very important for retail sales. They need to understand that when they get ready to rebid it. And I think they will.
We've got two heavy-hearted motions. Do we have a unanimous heavy heart? Go for it. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? You see our reluctance, Mr. Manager, if you would just relay that to the DOT, that make sure we stay on the party. We appreciate your diligence. Paul, thank you for your efforts on this project, too. Item nine, consideration to reschedule the Wednesday, April 10th budget meeting to the 24th. I think, Mr. Manager, is that your request?
Yes, ma'am, we had talked at the last budget meeting about doing this a week earlier, which would have been April 17th. I think for a couple of reasons, really, I just need a little bit more time, but also, I'd like to be able to get the packets out to you before the Monday, before the Wednesday, shoot for maybe the Friday, before that Wednesday meeting, get a little more time to look it, look it through. So, which, you know, obviously shortens the time that staff has to prepare it. So I just ask, and this is really noticed as much as anything, that we amend that budget meeting to Wednesday, April 24th. We had set it originally at the 17th, which we, we didn't close the meeting, we just recessed it until that date. So I'd ask you to pass a motion to recess that meeting instead of the 17th to April 24th.
Any troubles, Zach?
I do. That, that won't work, that date won't work for me. I would, I prefer either to move it to the Monday before that or to the Monday after that. 29th would be, I believe, 28th to 29th would be the Monday after that.
29th is Monday.
29th is Monday.
29th is Monday.
29th. 29th of April, is that good for everybody?
29th.
Okay.
I would make a motion to reschedule that meeting till April the 29th at-
6:15. Motion is second, any discussion? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed?
6:15?
6:15, yes.
And Mayor, I will, I'll try to update that budget meeting schedule since we changed it and try to lay out some new, new times and dates.
And is it a possibility that we could get a copy of that revised budget, the Monday before that? Give us a week?
Uh, yes.
22nd?
Yeah, since we moved that back, Monday will be fine, I think.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Manager, on that?
Okay, I'll be brief under my report. You'll see a proclamation that I put together recognizing May as Exercise and Medicine Month. There's several, our aquatic center, our SRAK, and some of the other community leaders and physicians are asking that we promote wellness in our community. I think it's a great thing to do. We all know that it's a positive attribute to have a healthy exercising community. So we've set this month of May for Exercise and Medicine Month. Tomorrow morning at 10:30, the beautifully arranged Sheets Station will be ribbon cutting, if y'all like to join us there. Had a little preview tonight, went out for a few minutes, beautiful place, great place, be a great asset to our community.
Free, free gas? Did you say free gas?
I got a free tank. No, I didn't, not really, just play. But I did get a free cup of coffee, I think. But it is a beautiful place, and I, if you get a chance to go, we'll be cutting ribbon at 10:30, I think, tomorrow morning.
That's tomorrow?
Yes, tomorrow morning. No, excuse me, Thursday morning.
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, I apologize, Thursday morning.
At what time?
10:30. 10:30. Thursday morning, 10:30. Because our healthcare facility is such an influx in our community, Johnson Health has shown an alliance with UNC Hospitals this week, they made that announcement. Just wanted to brief this board on that. Doesn't really change our relationship at all with them, but just be knowledgeable that alliance that they have done for our community. We also, since this last meeting, we have been recognized fully as an IB program in our high school. I think that's a great achievement for our school. We'll be working as a community towards betterment of our schools. There's several study committees. I know that Susan Laster has got a committee going about how to continue to move our schools ahead. Mr. Ashley and myself, we're in a meeting, a couple of weeks ago, maybe now, brought in the principal of Garner High School and how he has turned that school around and with such positive things. Really nothing new, just really old-school education, I think, is what I heard. But with some reward programs to the students. And they have also an IB program in that, in that student population that has turned them around. So I think the more we can help with our local school system as this board and support of that would be great to hear through our community.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd make a motion that we ask you to send a message to the school board that we appreciate what they've done for the high school in our city.
That I will do. We will send a nice letter with that gratitude, as well as encouragement to continue, you know, the dedication to our school. We are working toward Dr. Kroom and other organizations of how we can help expand our curriculum over there at the high school. I'm very big into vocational education, and that's something that I believe in. I think when we reduce that in our school system, that we lost a lot of students who are not necessarily four-year bound or have a direction that they want to go, may wind up being four-year college-bound, but we need vocational ed back in our schools, in my opinion. And I think the school board is recognizing that, and this board can encourage that for our community. I think that will be a good thing. That pretty much concludes my report. But we've had, well, one other thing, we have had several other ribbons cuttings recently. There's a lot of businesses that are in our community that are opening up, State Employees' Credit Union, the new building is up and running now. If you haven't seen that, go by and visit that. That's a great facility. So we've got a lot of activity, positive activity going in the community. So just, you know, it's important that we know that. Council members, comments? Anyone have a comment they wish to be heard on tonight?
Still need to work on those trunks. Up to Southern Highway.
Okay. Trailers. Mr. Imbler, do we ever get anything from the Hevner family on that location?
I have not gotten anything. I have got horrible news, if they would do that, I would call.
Okay. Any other council comments?
Mayor, we approved as part of the consent agenda, the 301 yard sale. I think that can just be a very good publicity for the I-95 corridor in Johnston County, which is so important to commerce in our county. I know we've got several organizations here in town that have worked hard on that, and I'm just, I think that's going to be a positive thing, publicity and bringing people in and the importance of not only I-95 corridor, but the 301 corridor, which is a fair enough thing.
And I'm glad you, I appreciate you mentioning that, Councilman. Ashley, I would assume that, that it's a two-day period in April, my memory is the 14th, 15th, whatever the dates are, are we going to rescind the requirement to have a permit for those spaces in the town of Smithfield during that time? Or has that been addressed?
Well, with the special use that was approved tonight, it authorizes them to set up, there's a general guideline of rules, and it basically says, it's got to be your yard or your business, or you have to have permission from the owner, or there has to be a designated, like, area that, like a vendor area. Is that right, Chris? So it's kind of, it's basically, you're approving that during, in that corridor for that timeframe.
And it is, we did have it permitted, so, you know, through this action tonight, so that's not that we're changing the rules of any kind. But I thank you, Mr. Ashley, and that is important, and we need to let that be known as a community effort. Any other comments from the council? Okay. Mr. Manager, you have a little bit of report for us?
Just a quick summary, Mayor, you've got my written report. Just, you see the activity reports on the different departments. Just want to note that the utility department, the electric, it was a good demand month. I guess the cold weather has caught up a little bit, so it was, it was a good month for us in a lot, a lot of respects. Also, on the water and sewer side also. So there were some good numbers in that department, if you had a chance to see those. On the Highway 70 bridge replacement project, we're still waiting on, on a date. It still looks like it's going to be that mid-April sometime, I'm hoping between the 14th and the 16th, 17th. And the ceremony, once we know that, will be a little bit more traditional than it might have been otherwise, with more just people on the ground, no jumps or anything like that going on. There are some opportunities, so it's going to be more traditional. We don't know the exact date yet, so two things have to happen. One, we're looking for a specific date, notification from DOT, and we will let you know as soon as we get that, because I think it's going to probably only be about a five, six-day notice is what I'm, I'm kind of hearing. Okay, so it'll be a pretty quick turnaround there, but I think they're trying to get it done as quick, as quickly as they can. So again, they're well ahead of their schedule, and they've done a good job out there. They're just waiting for that actual notice to go out. The scheduled water reuse line installation project over in South Smithfield, they did mobilize and start that into last week, so with weather allowing, that week will be, or that project will be continuing for the next month, month and a half, I think was the length of that project. Is that right, Lenny, that long? Yeah, about six weeks? Yeah, so that one finally got started, so they'll be out there for about a month and a half. But the trucks will be moving a little bit every day. I gave you a little summary from last month's meeting, really won't go over those again, but just, we are waiting for the RFPs on both the primary health and the ancillary health insurance services to come back. One is due on the 10th of April, I believe, the primary health, and that's really more proposal qualifications. And the ancillary health is going to come in about a week and a half later after that. And that will not only have service qualifications, but also actual rates for those ancillary health services. So we'll be looking at those in the next couple of weeks. Just a note, we've talked about the internet sweepstakes and the, the idea of altering, amending the fees for those, which are in the form of privileged licenses. You've heard us talk tonight and some, and previously about there might be some changes going on to whether privileged license or even chargeable. So we're trying to put together something for that, but we're keeping an eye on the legislation that's going through the General Assembly right now to see if that's impacted, because obviously, if it impacts that business, that would be actually quite a, quite a, quite a hit in terms of the internet sweepstakes, the privileged license that they pay, because they do generate some revenue for us. And we're actually talking about increasing those amounts, so that's something we're trying to stay, keep, keep up with. But we will bring you something as soon as we can. And if it looks like it's not going to happen or it stalled, we'll go ahead and pass that or recommend that change go ahead and take place. And if it does happen, then we'll just react accordingly, basically. Wanted to update the board. You know, I went to a, a Electric Cities meeting about a week and a half ago, Mr. Bach and myself went. And really, it was a typical summary, they talked about the rate plan increases, as the case may be, over the next five to eight years. So we got an update on that, updating their financials, and a pretty standard discussion. But the, the rate plan increase is something that, I've got some information on, if you're not familiar with, I'd be happy to share that with you. But there are, as a plan, it's been that way for several years now, there are scheduled increases that will take place, starting in 2015, 2016, that are scheduled by Electric Cities, the Eastern Agency, starting at that time, but would be consistent for three or four years. That is about a small 3% increase on their wholesale side for about three years, four years. So that's something that they're discussing now, is a way to avoid that, a way to put that off. That's a, that's a topic of conversation right now amongst the Electric Cities members. And in that regard, some of the towns in the Johnston County area, maybe close by, we've requested a meeting with the Electric Cities Director here in the next week, week and a half, to really talk about the whole debt situation that our towns are involved with, and also Electric Cities in general, and see what they're doing. They've given a few statements about that, but try to get some more information on what the payoff options are for that debt. I think you've heard the same line for many, many years now, that the scheduled debt, ours, which is over $50 million, should be paid off on the present schedule in 2026. That's the same schedule for all members of this Eastern Agency. Now, there's been talk about paying that off then, extending it, refinancing it, doing everything. And of course, it's all geared toward keeping the rates low. So, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of different options. So, you know, there's a lot of different options there in terms of, I don't think anybody really wants to extend the debt, but I think they would only do that so they could keep the rates lower, but you would still have the same debt, or you would be extending that debt. So the question is, if the present plan of increasing the rates about 3% starting in 2015, say, for three or four years, or they can extend the debt for 10 years, and you can keep the rates, no increases, for five years, and then it's a lower increase, what's the best mix? You know, it's one of those things, you know, it's kind of food and poison. Do you pay the painful payments now with a few rate increases and get through it and make that payoff, or do you look at an alternative? That's what we want to talk to the director at Electric Cities and see what they're looking at, and see if we can have a kind of a heart-to-heart conversation in, really, in the next 10 days to two weeks. We're trying to set up that meeting. Certainly, we'll report back once we've had that meeting and give you an idea of already options that haven't been really talked about in earnest out there. So just want to let the council know and the public know that we are looking at that. It is something, as we took some action last, or recently, or not took action, but we talked about a resolution, basically, by the three towns that would actually address that issue of, we're looking at the rates, we're trying to keep them down and be competitive. And I think the mayor's talked to his counterparts in both Dinsen and Selma about doing a joint resolution with those towns, just indicating that, a general statement saying that, "Look, we're looking at this as hard as we can. We realize that our rates are higher. We want to be competitive, we're doing everything we can to become more competitive." So anyway, I just want to give you a little bit of information on that, to just let you know that we're not just going through the motions and just listening to what's, you know, being told to us, but we're trying to question and find out if there's any alternatives that have not been discussed or explored up to this time. So anyway, hopefully, we'll have some more information for you after that meeting in the next week or two. And Mayor, I also just, I know it was mentioned earlier, just for the council and the public, any friends of, as you know, Vicki's son did pass away in that car accident. There will be a memorial service for Chris, her son, at 1:00 p.m. tomorrow. It's at the Parrish Funeral Home in Selma, so that will be at 1:00 p.m. tomorrow. So if anybody has an interest and wants to attend that, that's when it will take place. I mean, that's all I have.
Anything else for the group? No, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I'm moved. Those in favor, I?
Aye.
Opposed? Please adjourn.